Thank the audience members here and of course, our audience online on PE.com. We are doing 25 candidate forums this week across western Riverside County. Today, we are in Menifee at the campus of the Mount San Jacinto College and this forum is in fact, the Menifee City Council race. We started the day, the week rather, Monday in Beaumont, thanks to the Beaumont, I mean, I'm sorry, the Cherry Valley, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District, which is one of our sponsors. Tuesday, we are in Riverside. Wednesday, we are at the San Jacinto Campus of the college and today and tomorrow here at the Menifee Campus as well. All of these forums are being streamed live on PE.com and on Ustream TV. These forums are available for video viewing on demand on the political area of the website. Simple rules for our forum. Candidates have two minutes to make an opening statement. We'll go to a question and answer session where candidates will have one minute to answer each question. Questions will be asked of every candidate. There's also a one-minute closing statement. With that, I'm going to turn over the podium to our moderator, Bob Melch, who is Associate Instructor of Political Science here at the Menifee Campus of Mount San Jacinto College. Bob?
Thank you, Wally, and other audience members. It's a pleasure to be here to moderate this important discussion right here in the city of Menifee. The city of Menifee is one of the newest cities in Riverside County. Its incorporation was approved on June 3rd, 2008, so it's just barely past its second anniversary. The previous city was about ready to celebrate its 100th anniversary, little difference. The new city was officially established in '08, as I indicated, includes the communities of Sun City, Quail Valley, Valley, and portions of Romaland, and it has obviously seen dramatic development over the last few years, and now has a population of more than 60,000 residents. Candidates in this city are elected by districts, much like city, larger cities of Riverside and San Bernardino. We'd like you to meet each of the candidates, meeting or moving from your right to left. We have Councilman Scott Mann from the 2nd District, challenger Carol, do you want to be called Red or Carol?
Either one's fine.
Sullivan, Anne Pika, and John Denver, who's an incumbent. Those people, the last three are from District 4. So we begin these statements with Mr. Mann.
Thank you very much and good afternoon. I'd first like to say, since I'm going first, I'd like to thank the Press Enterprise and Mount San Jacinto College for hosting this event, and thank you, Mr. Melch, for being the moderator today. To the voters of the city of Menifee, my name's Councilman Scott Mann and I'm running for reelection in Menifee Council District Number 2. My wife Deborah and I have lived here since 1989, and we've raised our three grown children, who are now grown, all of whom were educated in the Menifee school system. My educational background includes a Bachelor of Business Administration degree, a Master of Business Administration degree, both from National University in La Jolla. I also hold a school business management certificate from the University of Southern California. I'm a Navy veteran. I enlisted in the Navy and retired after 25 years of service as a Mustang officer. Since leaving the service, I have held many management level and executive level positions, both in the public and the private sector. I'm currently assigned as the Chief Business Official for the Delmar School District down in San Diego County. In that capacity, I manage a budget in excess of $41 million and a payroll of $32 million. The payroll that I manage is larger than the combined budgets of the city of Menifee and the city of Canyon Lake put together. So why am I running for reelection? I hold a fundamental belief that local government exists for three reasons and three reasons only. The first being, public safety. Keep the city safe. The second being, infrastructure improvement. Make sure that things work and keep it clean. The third being, one of business development. Your city council has to have enough business savvy to be able to set policy and a fee structure that's conducive to developing and growing business in Menifee and expanding the tax base. It's for these reasons and these experiences that I've captured the endorsement of the Riverside Sheriff's Association, the California Department of Firefighters, the Riverside County Superintendent of Schools, and I ask for your vote on November 2nd, reelect Scott Mann for a second term to the Menifee City Council. Thank you very much.
All right, the next speaker, Red.
Thank you again for having us here this evening or this afternoon. I really appreciate the time and effort that you've taken. I'm Carol Sullivan, known as Red. I have, my family has lived in this area for 24 years. I've resided here for 12 years. In the period of 24 years, I've been involved with the origination of the first Sun City Library, putting together the community covered, also working with, making the city about 20, about 10 years ago. My mother was very involved in that and I was involved in that. In 2008, I decided to run for city council because I believed in cityhood. I ran, I promoted cityhood, and didn't make it, but I decided I wanted to continue on. In the past two years, I have been very active. I'm Vice President of Rotary. I'm involved in the Chamber of Commerce, I'm Vice Chair for the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I'm also a Board of Directors for the Menifee Sun City Concern. I'm very active, also involved in Little League and the fact that I scorekeep for some of the Little League games. So I'm very active and I know what's going on in the community. I'm very involved in the community. I live in a 55-plus community, so I'm very aware of where the seniors are. I chose to run for city council on several reasons. I have a business degree in, I have a Bachelor's in Business with an accounting, with an accounting minor from the University of Redlands. I have owned and operated several successful small businesses, so I am well aware of hiring, firing, budgeting, and contracts. For 20-some years, I was a Clinical Research Association Associate for pharmaceutical companies and worked both domestically and internationally to put drugs on the market. I have worked with budgets up to $5 to $10 million, dealing with international companies, and I've managed up to 200 to 300 people, and they would be all over the country. So I had to know the laws both here as well as overseas. I'm well-versed in budgets. I have worked as a consultant and put budgets together. I have developed financial departments and would be very instrumental in working in finances if elected. I'm for the interest, I'm for safety, obviously, and why I, because I'm part of the general plan, looking for slow growth, slow growth and bringing in industries. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pika.
My name is Anne Pika, and I'm a first-time person being involved in the political scene. I'm running for District 4, and I am a mother of four children, grandmother of five, and I'm a conservative candidate. The reason I decided to get involved in our city politics, back in 2007, I did a voluntary position as President of Citizens for Fair Representation, which is an overseas of local government, and I was very disappointed in what's going on in the City Hall. We had a city manager who was forced to resign. We had a finance director who was suspended and his contract was not renewed. We had a city attorney who blew the whistle on what was going on in the finance department, and she was more or less forced to resign. I decided that there was no communication coming out of City Hall, and we need that. People want to know what's going on in this city. These are our tax dollars that are being spent, and we don't know what's going on. I decided that I had to get involved because, just for myself, not only for myself, but for the people in my community. We need to know what's going on. These are tax dollars. The economy is bad, and now we don't know what's going on with our tax dollars. So I decided to get involved. If I am elected, believe me, I will be working for the people in my district and also for all people in the city of Menifee. My main priority will be my district and the overall, will oversee the city, working with the other council members, to make sure that everyone is properly represented. I will also work for the seniors. There seems to be a problem of sex offenders being allowed to become caretakers in their community, and I would like to help put an ordinance in place to have these people checked out to make sure that they don't do that. I also want to have slow growth. We don't need to be rushing in here, all kinds of companies. People bought here for the scenery, for the community to be an open community, and rural areas need to be deserved. Thank you very much.
Mr. Denver.
Thank you very much for putting this on. Press Enterprise is doing a wonderful job. My name is John Denver, and I'm a member of the Menifee City Council, and I'm quite proud of that. I was a member some 10 or 15 years ago of an early City of Menifee Formation Committee. I remember donating $1,000 for a study that showed at that time that we were not yet ready to become a city. That was then, now is now, and I more recently became a member of the City Formation Committee and was instrumental in getting the city of Menifee on the ballot. I have experience in running large governing organizations. I was on the school board at Parrish Union High School District for five terms. I've been the board president of that organization several times, president of the Menifee Chamber of Commerce, the Pettus Chamber of Commerce, and our local Board of Realtors. I'm on the Family Resource Center and the Local Rotary Club, I'm a member. I've been involved in other numerous civic causes, including being Santa at the local toy distribution done here in Quail Valley each year. It benefits our needy Menifee kids. I believe in Menifee becoming recognized as one of California's safest cities, and we're on the road to that. To that end, I chaired the city's Safety Committee and have hired new police when other cities have had to cut back. I actually started working on a new local police station, substation, planned in partnership with this very college, Mount San Jacinto College. I believe in smart land planning and development of a sound infrastructure and capital improvements. I'm assisting in planning the commission, planning commission and finding funds for improvements at both Newport and Scott Freeway overpasses. I believe in financial integrity and the promotion of economic business growth. Menifee is at a crucial time right now. We cannot take time to train a new city council person. We need experience right now. We need vision. We need trustworthiness. Please consider voting for me.
All right, now we begin the official questions. Each one, you'll get one minute. And the first question goes to the challengers, and we'll begin with Ms. Sullivan. It is, what sort of experience do you bring, or how could you help serve the city?
Okay, again, I said that I have a business degree. I've had several small businesses. I'm Vice Chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee, in which we are putting the vision together for the city. So I understand how the development of the city's going to be with the infrastructure, as well as where they're going to put commercial property, as well as the housing, which I believe should be small, and we need the infrastructure before we need the others. I will be bringing that to the table. I also have experience in the community with working with the seniors and working with the young people in the community, so I have the knowledge of not only the seniors, which I fit in that category, but I also have the young people, as I said, my family lives here. I think I can bring a lot to the table. I am good at resolving problems, analyzing problems, looking at them. I usually take a problem, look at it, try to come up with one or two solutions before I step forward and say, we need to do something that might be dramatic. I attend all of the city council meetings, so I'm sometimes in agreement with their decisions, sometimes I'm not, which I think is a good thing, because you don't want five council members, excuse me, five council members who are going to agree all the time on everything. I think you need some times to make different choices. Thank you.
Ms. Pika.
All the same question?
Same question.
I think I will bring honesty, integrity, communications. I will be open. I plan on having a monthly town hall meetings with my constituents, because the people are not getting the information that they want. That's why they're very angry with our local government, not only a local government, state and federal government. And I will bring that to this, this city council. Basically, I, as you can tell, I'm not a polished politician, and I'm doing the best I can to answer your questions, and I am informed of everything that's going on in City Hall. I attend all of the council meetings. I also am the President of Citizens for Fair Representation, which makes sure, I check all of the documentation in City Hall. I have all the records that are down there. I also have the focus plan that they have for what's coming into this community, and I am for slow growth, and I hope that you will vote for me.
Okay. Now we have the same question for the two incumbents. First, Mr. Mann, why are you running for reelection?
I'm running for reelection because I believe that there are many, many things that still need to be accomplished in the city of Menifee. When you consider the city as a new business startup, we are still in our infancy. We need to hire more people. We need to bring in more infrastructure to the city, and we need to do it in a way where we develop our business and grow our tax base in order to provide those additional services. The experience that I bring to the city of Menifee is from my management and executive experiences in the defense industry, the aerospace, business services, education, and now government experience. And what I want to share with you is that my leadership skills have been forged under some unique situations, operating in extremely stressful situations, and making decisions with imperfect information, and living with those decisions, good or bad. Those are character-building and leadership-developing situations. I've brought those to the council. I've made those decisions on the council in the last two years, and I'm asking for your vote to continue to make those decisions for you and the community. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Denver.
We're not done. We've been a city for two years. We're the second newest city in our area. We've done an awfully good job in the last two years, starting from absolutely zero, and today, we have numerous employees as well as consultants. We have an office building. Even the minor things, we've done, I think, well. Beautiful logo, and we have an efficient organization that's doing pretty darn good. The problems that we face now are honing some of the rough edges off of the, what we've done. We need to hire a new city manager. Our city manager needs to be, we now know that we need one that's very much more experienced. There's some laws that have been, that we now know about, having to do a supervision of supervisors in the finance area, and things that, that we, we now are going to do. I have a Master's Degree in Education and a Bachelor's Degree in Economics, and I'm prepared to help in the next four years to improve our city from its start.
All right, thank you. Now, a critical issue for all of you, and currently, the city, as you know, is divided into four districts. Two?
No, five.
Five. Pardon? Okay. There is a measure on the ballot, Measure DD, which reversed that process, moved the city into an at-large election process for the city council. What is your opinion? We'll start with Mr. Mann.
Well, thank you, sir. Well, first of all, just a minor correction. The city council didn't reverse anything, ladies and gentlemen, citizens and voters of Menifee. What the council did was put a ballot measure up on the ballot so that you can decide how you want to be governed going forward. There was an election, an incorporation election in June of 2008, and the voters voted by districts. On August 4th of 2009, we passed a resolution in accordance with the state law of California to divide the city up in different, in districts. We exercised our due diligence under law. We separated the city and districts, which is what the will and intent of the voters was at the time. And what we need to be able to do is give the voters a choice on this, and here's my main issue with the at-large versus district debate. There are many, many people who are on the anti-cityhood crowd and committee, who came and have been very vociferous at City Hall at the podium, and have said, the only reason why we voted for districts is because we voted against cityhood. Ladies and gentlemen, that skewed the vote. We need to do it again, and we need to give the voters a choice. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
As you can tell, this is a heated argument between the two sides. In 2008, when I ran for city council, I promoted cityhood. I also was in favor of at-large. I personally would like to have all five council members be responsible to me and be accountable to me. I understand that the voters voted for districts, and I am running for District 4 in accordance with the law, the way it was voted in 2008. I agree with Mr. Mann in the fact that if we are going to change, which AA does, or AA, however you're saying it, that's going to change us from four districts to mayor at-large. If we're going to make that choice, let's also give the people the choice clearly of at-large. Let them decide. Whatever decision the people make, whether it's four districts, five districts, or at-large, is how the council is going to manage the issues. And I think that the council's going to work together to do it as well as it can possibly do. I think at-large, for the size of our city, is a better way to rule, or a better way to govern, "rule" is the wrong word, and that was, that's my position. But however the voters decide to vote is how I will stand and back it. Thank you.
Okay. Anne Pika.
I am for districts. The people voted for districts in 2008. No one asked the city council to put at-large back on the ballot, but the people did put in and sign a petition that qualified for four districts and the mayor to be elected by the people, which is on the ballot. That is not changing anything to do with the vote in 2008 on by districts. It happens to be that the city of Menifee is governed by districts. This is just one of the four ways that by districts is allowed to go back to the voters. You have either from districts or by districts, and they are either for by districts and the mayor elected by the people, or from by district, from districts and the mayor elected by the people. This is all under 34870, which is the California Government Code that applies to cities that are newly incorporated. And if the people vote for by districts, then that is what they want. And that is what they wanted in 2008, and I believe that's what they'll show in 2010. And I am for districts. I am running for by district, and that is who I intend to represent, is the people of my district. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Mr. Mann.
I'm John Denver.
Denver, excuse me.
I'm in favor of at-large. The reason why, in my opinion, the people vote, or the number of votes for districts were collected at the initial time was that we were all voted, we were all running for ourselves at the time that we were campaigning. John Denver was not spending a lot of time talking about districts or at-large. There was very little discussion, as I remember, about the whole issue. It's amazing, though, if you take the number of people who, if you go through the registration and see the people who were against cityhood but voted for districts, it skews the entire number. I'm a small-D Democrat, and, small-D Democrat, and I think that we ought to put it on the ballot, on the ballot, settle it once and for all. Let's vote for four districts and a mayor at-large and give him a big pay, the mayor a big pay raise. Let's vote all five in, let's just vote that. Let's do it at-large. I'm going to be voting at-large so that we can all vote for all the city council instead of not being able to vote for four and only being able to vote for one.
All right, thank you. Considering your proposal for increasing the salary of the mayor, the next question deals with the economy. What areas would you recommend cutting to ensure fiscal viability for the city of Menifee? Let's start with Mr. Mann here.
Menifee is in a unique position where we don't have to cut anything, like Wildomar. You know, Microsoft, Disney, some very well-known Fortune 500 companies were, startup companies in a recession. Wildomar, Menifee, and soon Eastvale, well, now Eastvale, on October 1, these cities were incorporated during recessionary times. This council has been frugal with your money. We have maintained salaries where they're at. We have taken on consultants where we need to take on consultants. We have spent wisely, and we have grown the reserve in the process. And we've also set policies and fee structure at City Hall that's conducive to growing business and expanding the tax base. And when your property tax revenue increases and your sales tax revenue increases, like it has in the city of Menifee, city of Menifee's sales tax revenue is up 15.35% this time, year over year, your council's doing a good job, and as Chairman of the Finance Committee, both myself and the mayor have helped forge those policies. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan, do you agree with him, or do you think there needs to be some cuts?
Well, I would have to agree with Mr. Mann. Having reviewed the budget, and I do this on a regular basis, as well as the warrant registry, in trying to keep up with what's going on, we're, we're sound, and I don't see where we need to cut anything at this point in time. I don't think we need to go out and spend a lot of money either, but I think we need to stay on the track that we are. I know they're going to, it'll be reviewed in January at that point in time, find out where we are, but we're a solvent city, and we're strong, and we have reserves, and the current council has done a very good job to keep the money where it needs to be and spend it. The only problem that they had originally, which I would work very hard to see we don't do again, is that they understaffed their finance department, which is what got them in the problem, got them in the mess that they got in with money, which caused the first audit. But that was a problem that was happened. It's been corrected and it's being worked on, so you need to make sure that you staff your areas properly. That's the only thing that I saw in the entire time, but I agree, the city's solvent.
Ms. Pika, do you also agree?
I do, and I just wanted to correct something. As far as the mayor position that will be on the ballot, that will eliminate the position of the fifth councilperson, who now gets $500 a month. The only increase will be ruled by the city people who vote, and that will be either $2,000 or $4,000. So that is the only increase there, and we're willing to spend $10,000 on a poll to put a banner on that Mr. Denver has asked for. Now, that's not a waste of money? I think it is, when that money could be used for weed abatement and wouldn't have had to go into the reserve and get $57,000 out. So, yeah, I don't, I do agree that we are solvent, but I needed to correct that phrase on the, the city, the mayor that will be on the ballot. It's the people who will decide what he will earn. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ah, Mr. Denver, what do you say to her charges and the solvency issue?
I'm trying very hard to be positive. We are a very solvent city. We are, we are very conservative. If we have a problem, we're too conservative. We told our city manager to hire slowly, to bring up the staff gently, and to make sure that we were always a conservative city. He listened to us, and he actually went too slow, and it, some may say that cost him his job. I believe that you, we do need to spend some more money. It needs to be on some people out front. We do a real good job of taking care of the large developers when they come in. We actually have several, several of those coming in, and we're staffed up for that very well. The need we have is to have somebody out front to help you when you want to do a new patio cover. It's pretty hard to get through our city right now when you do a small project. We don't have enough people out front who can help you through the process. We do need to spend a little more money out there. Some people are trying to say things about our city that are not true. Look back in their records. These were the people who put up the cardboard sites. These were the people who put up the cardboard sites saying, "Don't, we don't want city." And their purpose is to eliminate our city and bring it to its knees.
Okay. Well, given that you're all in unanimity, at least on the solvency issue, what areas would you expand, if given the opportunity? Mr. Mann?
If given the opportunity and the...
Could you repeat the question?
The question is, since you all agree that there should be no cuts, that you're solvent, are there any areas that you could expand upon?
I've been pretty clear, we need to spend some money out front so that the people who come to the counter to pull permits get proper service. The other place we need to make sure is we need a continual monitoring of the predators that are in the Sun City area, and we need to figure out exactly what we should do about that. That's going to take some money, too. We need to keep the police force at the right level. Do you know that when we started our city, the Highway Patrol was our police, they didn't give tickets? Remember the bumper stickers, "Pray for me, I drive in Sun City"? That's not true anymore. We expend a little bit more money on police. We have our own police department now, and I'm proud of it. We're actually doing a pretty good job. I would say service is the main thing that we absolutely have to improve on.
All right. We go next to Ms. Pika. Do you see any areas where they could expand?
Absolutely. We need a HR department, we need job descriptions, we need these things posted so the people in Menifee are given the opportunity to get these jobs. We've got well-qualified people in this city, and yet we don't know what's being hired and who's being hired. Most of it is contract employees, and they end up getting hired permanently without ever going out to the public. I feel that we need to have the public be the first ones that are allowed to get these positions. We need job descriptions. There are only two job descriptions. As a matter of fact, I requested them, and I know that for a fact because I have an email stating it, that they do not have them in place yet for the HR department. They don't have any other job descriptions except for the city clerk. And for, I believe it's, they don't have one for the finance department either. And I think that they have, they don't even have one for the finance clerk, who they just hired. So, you know, this is the basics. When you start a new city, these are the things that are the most important to have in place, if you don't want to have the mishaps that we already had two years ago. Well, within the last two years. You know, other cities are not having these problems, and these are the main things that we really need to take care of. And that's what I'm saying is, that's definitely what I would do. And as far as, okay, my time is up, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan, your response?
Well, I agree, we do need to hire some more staff. Again, we're a new city, so we hired slowly as we got going. First of all, first office we had wasn't even big enough for the five or six people that were in there. And as it grows and as we get a permanent city manager, who will be managing the staff, not the city council, because that's how our particular cities run, we will be hiring these people. Having been a consultant and gone into brand-new businesses, I know that we have hired people and then created job descriptions, because sometimes you need the person there before you need a description. As far as hiring within or without the city, you post them, and the most qualified person should be hired, not necessarily somebody that lives in Menifee, but the most qualified, because we don't want to have unqualified people doing the job. In other words, we're going to have the same problem we had earlier this year. I also think we need to stay on top of our fire and police to make sure that we have the proper services there, because I don't really want to cut down on fire or police or EMTs. We have a senior community who really needs those services. And that's where I would stay, and I would be on top of the financial department. Thank you.
And Mr. Mann?
Thank you. I want to contradict just a couple of things. There are actually, there are cities in California that are having problems, and they're called Bell, Downey, Vernon, San Jacinto, and Grand Terrace. And those cities, ladies and gentlemen, got away with things for so long and had to have outside entities discover those problems. Your council, through the leadership of those of us that are on the council now, brought those issues to light and corrected them. We self-corrected, we didn't need outside assistance, and we've righted that ship. I agree with Ms. Pika. We absolutely need HR staffing. We don't have position descriptions, we don't have a salary schedule, and that's why the interim city manager is right now in the process of hiring that HR manager to bring that expertise to City Hall. Other areas that we absolutely must have improvement on, we are woefully ill-prepared right now for economic recovery in our planning department and in our public works department. We barely have the staff now to make those things go from a customer service standpoint. Can you imagine where we're dealing with triple and quadruple the load? We absolutely need to hire more staff and become more efficient and become better at customer service in those departments. Thank you.
All right. Our next question deals with traffic. For many, traffic is an issue in Menifee. How can the city of Menifee improve traffic conditions, especially along the crowded Newport Road? And we'll start with Ms. Sullivan on this question.
Well, I think they're already improving Newport by putting in the loops and making it larger, and they have been working on it for the last two years. We have the two north and south loop coming in at Newport and Hawn, and that's going to help. They're also working on making, improving Antelope as well as, it's in Ethanac and the other streets, and they are making them happen. The two streets that I am most concerned about and would be watching are Myrietta and Bradley. As all of you know, if it rains, you can't go north or south in our city. So we really need to do something about the Salt Creek and make sure that that happens. Scott Road needs to be enlarged and have the infrastructure to handle the traffic that we have now, and if we bring Walmart in, it definitely has to be enlarged. Holland will need to be enlarged. And so we need to widen all of these roads. And again, on being on the general plan, I am seeing what is going on outside our city as well as inside our city. So we need to really work on our infrastructure to make this work. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mann, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, this is a topic that's near and dear to all of us, because I'm representing the city on the Western Riverside Council of Governments, and that's a JPA that manages your tax dollars from the transportation uniform mitigation fee standpoint. There are plans for road improvements throughout the I-215 corridor, from Scott Road to Newport Road up to McCall. There are sound barrier walls going in along I-215 as part of the Central Phase Project. What you may not know, and the city frankly has done a pretty poor job of communicating what we have done, look what we have done. We've gotten the Newport Road realignment project done. We're getting, the county went out to bid for Phase Two, which is the Getz Road bridging. The Public Works Department just announced at the last city council meeting that they're going to be resurfacing Bradley and Encanto Roads here this coming November. We've also graded several gravel residential roads in the Romaland area and other areas in the city. We've also captured $411,000 in safe routes to school funding for projects. And so your council is on top of these things. It just takes money, and it just takes time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Denver?
I hope that you all heard what Mr. Mann just said. Your council has been working on all these projects all along, and the problem with it is, is we're in a recession, and the state of California and Riverside County have cut back funds. We wouldn't be having the problems we have if this economy had kept up the way that we'd all hoped it would have. These programs, these projects are being accomplished as we speak. I'm not arguing that they haven't slowed down some, but if you look at the projects below, on the south of Scott Road, you'll see that those are being put together now. Soon, they'll start moving up from Scott Road up into Paris, widening the freeway, the sound walls that were being discussed, and all that. That's all been arranged, that's all been put together. Your council and other governments have already put that together. The problem is money. We have choices in Menifee. We have choices of taxing you more and doing these quicker, or doing them a little slower and getting the money from more traditional government sources. We're not taxing you.
And Ms. Pika?
Well, I was at the last meeting when we were discussing the roads in Menifee, and it's my understanding that this is money that's coming from Riverside and different monies that are being given to the city to do this work. And it's true, they say they're going to be working on, I'm not going to say that they're not trying to get the job done, because the engineers are trying to get the job done, and they're putting the plans out there, and it's just implementing them. Because we're not involved and actually sitting on the council, I can't tell you where this money is actually going, because I don't have that in front of me to do it. And the only thing that I do have a problem with is that they have decided to do Encanto, and they're only doing one side of the road, when both sides of the road are torn up, and that is a concern for me. If you're going to do a road, let's do the whole thing. Where the residents live is not being done, but where it's empty and it's vacant lots, that road to Paris is being done. So I just don't understand that kind of logic. Thank you.
All right. Given the financial stumbling blocks the city encountered during its first two years, with contracts not being adhered to, and what auditors call a lack of internal financial controls, what do you think the city learned or should have learned from this experiences? What changes did the city make in how it manages or approaches finances? Mr. Mann, you're first.
Hiring professional, experienced, competent executives.
Okay. Mr. Denver?
I wish I could have said that better. In addition to that, I would argue that you have to give us a little time to be able to work out some of the kinks. Brand-new council, working on brand-new projects in a brand-new city, and we are to give, the council is to give overall direction. The detail to it is to do, is to be given to our staff. We only hire two people in Menifee. The council only hires two people. We hire the city manager and we hire the city clerk. The city manager hires everybody else. The city manager supervises everybody else. So we're trying right now to hire the proper city manager that will do all the jobs that we've told him that we demand he do, and that's our present goal right now.
Okay. Ann Pika?
Have I thought they've learned anything? Is that what you're asking me?
Well, a couple of things. Have they learned anything, and what changes?
Well, actually, I don't think they've learned very much. It's taken them two years, and we're still in the same fix. And it's always the same story. It's a new city. We're in a learning curve. Mr. Denver just said we don't want to hire inexperienced people, but how long does it take you to learn? I'm ready to, I've got my boots on, and I'm ready to run if I'm elected. And that's the way I think everybody should be. And you know what? We need to hire these people in, we need to get experienced people in, we need to check their background, we need to know exactly what their credentials are before you hire them. You can have an intern city manager as long until you get the right person in the right position to take care of the city. And that's my logic there. I don't think that you need to be going out and depending on the city manager to do everything. You're absolutely right in a way. He is, but he works for you, and you do have input to the city manager on how everything is being run. And if something's not going correctly, you go to the city manager and you make sure he gets it corrected. It's real simple. I mean, it's just like any company. You're not going to let something go wrong and to say, "Well, it was his job and he didn't do it." It's your job to make sure it's done correctly. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Sullivan?
I think they have learned. You took five people, and except for our mayor, they had never served on a council before. I ran in 2008. I'd never served on a council before. I really didn't know all of the intricate details that a council has to do. They had a lot of things to do. They relied upon a consulting firm, who unfortunately didn't give them the best advice. When they discovered these things, they've corrected them. I have watched that happen over the past two years and have been involved with, with working with the city at different times. I think they've learned, I think they're correcting, and I think it will continue to happen. Having started new businesses myself, you walk in, you think you're going to make a million bucks the first week, it doesn't happen that way. A business takes three to five years to break even. We're past the break-even point, and we have a reserve. It is a matter of five people sitting on a council, making sure that they make the right decisions. They're going to make mistakes. Elected, I probably will make a few as well. And I hope to learn from them. As each of us has gone through our life, we've made mistakes, and we've learned from those mistakes, and we've corrected them, or we continued on with whatever areas we were. I think the city's learned a lot, and the council's learned a lot in the two years.
Okay. Thank you. Given some of the recent questions about the council's travel and mileage expenses, do you think the council should make changes to its travel or expense policies or to how it approaches travel expenses? Mr. Denver, you get first shot.
Interesting you should ask me first. I'm thinking that what we ought to do, instead of sending, I'm being a little bit smart alecky, but I think we ought to send all our staff at $45 an hour to the conferences we have to go to. Then we'd be paying $45 an hour plus mileage. You see how silly that is? What I'm saying is, is that we go, we spend our time for free, we bring back our, the businesses that need to come to Menifee, we go to classes so we learn how to not make mistakes. There are requirements that we go to certain meetings, and there, we don't get to choose where those meetings are. Each of us gives a great deal of our time and a great deal of our money to this city, and nobody really questions that. This is not a paid job. We all work for free virtually, and we do not get paid back for the amount of money we spend. I think we need to just follow the rules and do a good job and do what the citizens want us to do, which is to go to these meetings and learn how to run a city.
All right. Ms. Pika?
What was that question again?
The question is, given some of the recent questions about the council's travel and mileage expenses, do you think the council should make changes to these policies?
Absolutely. I'm looking at John Denver's expenses here, and he also has a flyer out here that says that he implemented policies to ensure taxpayer money is not abused by council members or city staff. Yet, Mr. Denver charges you every time he leaves his home for gas mileage. He's being paid to go to some of these committees that he attends, $100, yet he charges us for the mileage. Yes, absolutely, I think changes should be made. I think that there should be turning in their certificates of gas mileage, the date that they use the gas, the place of orient, where they were headed for. This, I mean, in any business that I have ever worked in, we have had to turn ours in immediately. You don't wait six months or a year and then turn in all of these bills and not have anything to back it up. And yet you expect the taxpayers to pay it. I think it's outrageous. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan?
Well, I'm not sure what they're, since I'm not on the council, I haven't seen their actual policy, so I'm not sure exactly what they, what their policy is. However, I can speak from having traveled 20-some-odd years in clinical research, in which I had an expense account or had to turn in expenses. I had documentation on it, I knew exactly what I could or couldn't spend, and anything that I spent outside of that, and I will say, I have even taken legs from where it was to go do other things, and I paid the company back, and most times I saved the company money by making another little jaunt. I think you have to look at the council, and you have to look at the fact that these are ethical people, we've elected them to serve, we have to take it as it is. Are people going to abuse the system? Some people will abuse it, and if they do and they're caught, then they need to change. But they, by and large, the expense policy is there so that they can be reimbursed for travel. I don't think they should get any reimbursement for within the city, because we're all traveling from place to place. I've been in five places today, I was a city council member, I was doing city, would have been doing city business in all five of them. How do I decide? I think you turn them in in a timely manner, and we had to have ours turned in within 10 to 30 days, or we didn't get paid. And you just need to look at it and be sensible about how you do them. Thank you.
And Mr. Mann?
Thank you. We certainly need to improve upon our documentation and shore up our policy at City Hall. We can always improve on those things, first, to be sure. But what I would like to say is, frankly, I'd like to travel more. Let me say that again, I'd like to travel more on your behalf. Do you hear that incredible sucking sound? All right? That is your tax dollars leaving the city of Menifee, heading to Washington DC and Sacramento. The travel trips that I've been on, one to DC, four to Sacramento, have all been to bring your tax dollars back into the city of Menifee for the benefit of the city. I'm very grateful that the press enterprise did the expose on how much we travel, because over the last two years, I've spent $7,000 of taxpayer dollars in my travels, but guess what, ladies and gentlemen? I've brought millions back into the city. We just were awarded a $1 million grant from the Santa Ana Waterside Power Authority for the Romaland Homeland Master Flood Control Project in northeast part of the city. I brought $411,000 in safe routes to school money back to the city, and we're working on $41 million for Line A, and we're working on another $60 million in cooperation with EMWD to bring a Quail Valley sewer system. So please, let me travel more, I'll bring more dollars back here.
Next question. Recently, some citizens have complained about the city's approach to code enforcement, mainly that it's too strict in some areas and not strict enough in others. Do you think there's any merit to these criticisms of code enforcement? Do you think there's any merit to these criticisms of code enforcement? If so, as a council member, would you do... What would you do to change the city's approach to code enforcement? And Ms. Pika, you're first.
Yes, I've heard a lot of complaints in the code enforcement. I think we need to review a lot of these to see if they actually fit for our city. There's nothing that says that we can't review them and we don't need to enforce half of them on the people of the city. I don't know... I know that there is a problem with new businesses coming in here. They have to pay $10,000 on top of the other fees that are required by them if they want to have music after 10 o'clock at night, I believe it is. And also horses being... The rural areas. You know, the people are now being told they can't board horses up there when they've been doing it for the last 30, 40 years. These are things that we need to look at because there are many rural areas in this city that people have horses. And we need to check out the codes and see if they really fit the area. I mean, you know, you just can't impose a bunch of different codes that are going on in Riverside to try and impose them on a countryside like Menifee. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Well, I agree that we need to look at each one. When we became a city, we adopted Riverside County's ordinances. And each ordinance needs to be looked at, which again, takes a long time. If any of you have ever looked at an ordinance, they're quite lengthy and they're very legal. So you have to try to figure out what they're trying to say. I think code enforcement is trying to do the best they can. And have they maybe gone over the limits at times? Perhaps so, but you have to take those on individual cases. As far as boarding horses, we want to make sure that the horses' safety comes first. I know of one place up in Quail Valley in which they were boarding horses. They've been doing it for years. And the horses were not treated properly. They were in their own manure. The stalls weren't cleaned. And grass was growing and the horses themselves were not being exercised. We need to at least go in and look and find out. So when someone complains they can't board a horse, then I think the city needs to look and find out exactly what's going on there because these complaints came from other people. But each time, we have an ordinance we need to go through. But I will say this, with code enforcement, especially up in the Quail Valley area, which is Mr. Mann's area, and I do own property up there, it is looking much better. And I know the people are not happy that they can't have washing machines in their front yard and they can't have some of these other things. But the people who don't want washing machines in their front yards and they don't want refrigerators are really happy to see code enforcement come up and say, "You have to get rid of this stuff." Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Denver, you get the final word on this question. Oh, excuse me. I want you to go first, Mr. Mann. Sorry.
Code enforcement can be a double-edged sword because somebody's going to always be hurt by the outcome, whether it be the one receiving the citation or the one paying the fine. We have two code enforcement officers in the city right now. We need to add a couple more. The city manager is exploring efficiencies in the code enforcement department, up to and including perhaps even moving from one department to another of how the code enforcement division is managed. What bothers me right now in our application of our code enforcement is that, you know, we've waived conditional use permits for selected businesses. We've waived CUPs for the Ponderosa, for Bob's Pit Stop, for the Menifee Market Office, Scott Road. But yet, we don't extend the same courtesy to other property owners, such as the gentleman who's not here tonight from the Wooden Nickel Ranch, who has provided a great service over the years with his Civil War reenactment battle thing. So I mean, those are things that, yes, code's good, ordinances are good, and laws are good. But you have to have a common sense application of those laws. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Denver.
When Menifee became a city, we were applauded by Riverside County. They were glad to see Menifee become a city because they're not geared up for suburban or urban areas. They're a rural mindset. Code enforcement is a city function. And some citizens in our town are not comfortable yet with being in a city with city rules. Ms. Sullivan mentioned having equipment out in your front yard or having your car up on jacks in the front of your yard. That's a rural kind of activity. Having commercial use in a residential area, boarding horses may be one of those kinds of things. There should be exceptions for some of them. But I think the main problem is, one, we don't have enough code enforcement people to properly handle this. And I think that we're in a learning curve having to do with the citizens realizing that we're no longer... That some parts of Menifee are no longer out in the country.
All right. Some residents of Sun City have expressed concern about losing their identity, which predates the creation, of course, of the city of Menifee. How can the city of Menifee soften or assuage these fears? And Mr. Denver, you go first.
Sun City will always be Sun City. Sun City is a proud part of our town and we're glad to have it. It is the center of our town. It's the focus of our town. We're going to be making sure that Sun City improves and becomes a destination, a place where people, when they're 54, say, "Oh, goodie, next year I get to go to Sun City" rather than, "I need to go to Sun City because that's where I can afford to live," which is not the way everyone does that now. I'm not saying that. We are... Sun City is a senior community. It's in the CCNRs. You can't change it. We're going to have a senior area there. Quail Valley is going to remain a country area for as long as we can imagine. Romaland is an issue. The general plan is really the question on this. Exactly what are we going to do with the general plan? In my opinion, that ends up being an industrial area and some residential also. So it's... I think that people are overly worried on this issue.
Okay. Ms. Pika.
I think what their people in Sun City are upset about is that all signs relating to the name of Sun City have been removed. And I think that it simply could be resolved by putting signs back up to enter Sun City area. People have been here 50, 60 years. And it is not all seniors in Sun City. I don't live in the core in Sun City. There are all families around me in Sun City. So it's not just the seniors who are complaining about this. It is also the families that don't like the idea of having their name taken away from a place they moved to and all their family come up here looking for Sun City and there's no longer anything that tells them where Sun City is now. We know we're part of Menifee. I don't know why there is this thing to delete Sun City and you haven't done anything about Quail Valley or Romaland. So that's why the people take offense to this because they're the only ones that are being taken their name away. They're the ones that are losing their identity. So that's the reason why. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan.
I also live in the Sun City area and I live in a gated community. And it was Sun City and it's been Sun City for 24-plus years. However, I don't feel that I lost any identity. I live in the Sun City section of Menifee. Menifee is the city I live in. I've traveled all over the world and I've told people I live in Sun City. They think I'm in Arizona. They think I'm in Northern California. They think I'm in Florida. They have no clue where I am because Del Webb named every one of his projects Sun City. One of the things that I would like to see happen is to reface, put a fresh paint on the Sun City Shopping Center. Let's call it Sun City Plaza. Then we have left the identity there. The signs on the freeway were removed by Caltrans. The city has nothing to do with that. You can live where you wish to live. If you live in San Diego, they have 45 different communities. You can be in Mesa College, Kearney-Mesus, different ones. You live where you live. And if you choose to say you live in the Sun City section of Menifee, that's where you live. Quail Valley is going through the same thing. They've been Quail Valley for a long time. They now say they live in the Quail Valley section of Menifee. You don't lose your identity that way. You just have to stay where you live. Thank you.
And Mr. Mann.
I'm glad this question was asked and I'm glad we've had an opportunity to address it because it needs to be addressed. Red's right that Caltrans put the signs up on the freeway. And they had to do that because we are now an incorporated city. And they're markers on a federal highway. What I think we need to do is we need to approach this from a community and a neighborhood standpoint and put up some neighborhood-type identifiers. You know, welcome to Sun City, welcome to Romaland, welcome to Quail Valley. And do it that way and make those signages unique in some way. And I'd be in favor of something like that. There'll always be Sun City. There'll always be Romaland. There'll always be Quail Valley, just like there's always Hollywood. There's Los Angeles. There's Hollywood. There's Beverly Hills. Those are all Los Angeles. They just chose to keep those names. And, you know, mail is delivered by your street address and your zip code. So if you put 123 Johnson Avenue in Long Beach, California, but you use 92587 as your zip code, it's still going to get to your street. So I'm in favor of bringing back some neighborhood signage for the branding of these neighborhoods.
Okay. Fire services. Currently, they're... Okay. All right. We'll skip that one. Time to do a wrap-up. And we start with Mr. Mann, and I believe these are one minute. Okay. You have... Is there one minute? One minute.
Thank you. What an honor it has been here today. It's a great job Mount San Jacinto College putting this together for us and Menifee appreciates it. Sort of wrapping up my vision for Menifee, we need to become, and we are becoming, one of the state's safest cities. We need to promote and are promoting smart land planning and development of sound infrastructure. We need to keep financially have integrity. We need to promote economic development, provide high-quality service, and keep Menifee and its components unique and together. I am going to work on that for the next four years if given the chance. I think you need someone who's honest, who has the time to do this, who has the... Who's been a part of our city. And I'd be honored to serve you as your councilperson in the next four years if given the chance.
Moving right along to Ms. Pika.
When I'm elected, I will assist the seniors in getting an ordinance in place to restrict sex offenders from taking... Becoming caretakers without actually putting an ordinance in to take care... To double-check on caretakers in the senior community because they seem to be predators that are moving into the senior community. We're having a problem right now. I will continue to build civic pride and renew public trust in local government, protecting the public safety of seniors and young families alike, work to create more jobs in Menifee and see that infrastructure improvements are an ongoing project in Menifee. I will work to have responsible housing and commercial development while maintaining the opportunities for sensible development in our community. Slow and even development is what is required at this time for Menifee. I look forward to your vote. Thank you very much.
And Red.
Well, I want to thank you, first of all, for having us here today. I really appreciate it. I'm going to go back to the fact that I'm on the General Plan Advisory Committee. Can't get the word out of my mouth. Sorry. I have been working on this since February. What I see for Menifee is a rural setting with infrastructure, with slow growth as far as bringing in the industry and the jobs and then housing. I have looked at where the different areas are that we're going to put things. I see this as still an open town, as far as open space town, rural type of setting, but bringing in some commercial, some light industry because we need the jobs. Without the jobs, we cannot all survive. We need to have jobs for our younger families and even for some of us who may choose to work. And to do that, we've got to bring in the roads first. Then we've got to bring in the proper businesses. And then we bring in housing. Housing comes last because until you have the jobs, there's no point in building houses and having more foreclosures. I would work on this. Also, I would be involved in the financial stability within the city, again, because of my accounting background. I see this as a place that people want to come to, that they don't just drive in, get gas and leave because there is nothing here. We need to make this... We need to beautify the city. We need to make it a rural community. And I think it would be one of the best in southwest Riverside County. Thank you.
Mr. Mann, you get the final word.
Thank you very much, once again, for hosting us. As a commissioned officer in the United States Navy and as your councilman, I took a note to uphold the Constitution of the United States. As a member of your city council, I've never wavered from that oath. As a member of your council, I will never forget that I worked for you, the taxpayer. My responsibility is to protect your interests and property. I do not believe that local government is a social services laboratory, a sanctuary for any group, or a blank check for Sacramento or Washington bureaucrats to abuse. As I mentioned before, my fundamental belief of local government is... Exists to provide public safety, infrastructure, and to grow commerce and business development. This past year, I had to make some tough leadership choices as a member of our city council. Exposing mismanagement for our hired city staff was not pleasant, but it was my responsibility to you, the taxpayer. I will never shy away from accountability to the citizens of Menifee. I welcome the opportunity for you to return me to the council so that we can continue to work together to build Menifee. And as many of you know in our communities, some of you have heard the expression, "Don't take any wooden nickels." Well, I would ask you that as you see these appear on your doorstep in District 2, don't take any wooden nickels from my opponent, Tom Furman. Thank you very much. Vote for Scott Mann.
Thank you all for being here, showing up, giving your views, responding to questions. And a particular thanks to the citizens of Menifee for showing up to listen and pay attention. Thank you.
All right. And thank you to our moderator, Bob Melch. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating. I'd like to thank the audience here. I'd like to thank our audience on PE.com and our staff, Angel Ortiz and Louis Amstoy. I'd like to remind everybody to please vote on November 2nd. Important election for all of us in these times. We also invite you to join us on November 2nd for a live election show on PE.com. And as those results trickle in at a really slow rate, as they always do, we'll also have a recap show on the next morning on November 3rd. Thank you very much. I'm Nelson Jensen. Good night.